Good evening, everyone. My name is Wayne Benner, Deputy Secretary of State for Elections, and I would like to welcome you all here for this public forum. This meeting is subject to the Open Meetings Laws of the State of Nebraska. Notice this meeting was published in the Lincoln Journal Star advising that a public hearing be held on referendum measure 435 on this date at 6:00 PM at the Nebraska State Capitol. A copy of the notice will be made of the public record and is hereby made part of the hearing record for this evening, including proof of publication from the Lincoln Journal Star. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Laws displayed on the easel to my left, to your right. An agenda and materials prepared for the public in the form of pamphlets are available at the door. The Secretary of State's office is required by law to conduct this hearing for purposes of receiving comments from proponents and opponents and from members of the public on referendum measure 435 concerning private, the private education scholarship partial referendum that will appear on the November 5th, 2024 general election ballot. Appearing with me is Elections Coordinator Jennifer Beckman from the Secretary of State's Office. She is at the front door, and she'll be happy to assist you with any information or any questions. I'd also like to introduce our court reporter, Matthew Quinn, who will be making the official record of these proceedings. These proceedings are also being streamed on AT as well. This evening's hearing covers the first congressional district for referendum 435. We were required to have a hearing on each initiative in each of the three congressional districts. I am not going to be acting as a judge where I make rulings on evidence or rulings on who's right or who's wrong. I'm serving as a moderator according to law to ensure that we have an orderly proceeding for the benefit of those in attendance and especially for the benefit of the court reporter. In a moment, we will have 10-minute statements from our recognized proponent and a recognized opponent of the measure. After that, we will allow citizens to testify, alternating between proponents and opponents of the measure. When you came into a room, you were asked to sign in if you wished to testify. After the opening statements, I'll begin with those who signed in. After that, if there's time, I'll ask if there's anyone else who did not sign in that wishes to testify. If I can get a show of hands of who intends to testify this evening? All right, with that, I will allow for five minutes of testimony from each speaker. I do reserve the right, if we have more people across the evening that come in, I may limit to three minutes to make sure as many people can speak as we can. We will have, we will go through the entire list of speakers, or if we reach 8:40 PM, whichever comes first, afterwards, the recognized proponents and recognized opponents will give their closing statements. When I call you forward to testify, I will ask you to state your name, and please spell it for the record, and let us know if you are testifying on behalf of any organization. This helps ensure that a court reporter can accurately reflect your testimony. For many of you, for some of you, this may be the first time that you have spoken or testified in a setting such as this, and in tendency, you may want to speak a little bit faster to get through it really fast. That's going to be a little difficult for the court reporter, so they may interrupt you. Don't be startled, you're not in trouble or anything, it's just so we can keep it accurate public record. If you do have written comments, you can give it to the court reporter, who will be able to then make sure that what you said matches what you had to testify. If you are using it digitally on a phone or a tablet, he will have his email address available, and you can email your comments to him for the official record. I will be timing each testifier. We need to be conscious of the fact that there are people who want to testify, and they need a reasonable chance to do so. Because of the limited staff I have, I cannot reach the buttons, so I have this very official one-minute logo. I was pointing, but I didn't think that was appropriate anymore, but to let you know that you have one minute remaining. If you pass that minute, and I've only had one person in four days to do so, I'll politely ask you to wrap up your comments so we can go on to the next speaker. If you have a question during this time, you can write a question and hand it to Jennifer at any time, and we'll go through the questions at the end and raise them before closing comments, and any of the recognized speakers may or may not choose to answer any of those questions brought up during the hearing. As required by law, the Secretary of State's Office has produced an official pamphlet regarding the ballot measures. The pamphlets have the text, the ballot language, and arguments for and against the ballot measures provided to our office by recognized opponents and proponents of the measures. We have a number of these pamphlets available here tonight that are located by the front door. Jennifer can assist you. We do not want to put them back in our car, so please take as many as you want. Pamphlets are also available at our Capitol Office here, and at the State Election Division at 13th and M Street in Lincoln, and at any of the county election or elections. See, this is what I'm telling you, I'm going, if you go too fast, he's going to interrupt you, but it's fine. Pamphlets are also available at the, at any county election office or any county clerk's office across the state. You can also download copies at our website, sos nebraska.gov. A staff member can give you that site if you'd like to have it for reviewing or downloading the information. All right, now I feel like a state senator giving all the opening comments, and this is really weird for me, especially with a lot of state senators in the room, so we're going to get started, and I would ask Rita Bennett to please come forward to show, show opening remarks from the proponents.
My name is Rita Bennett, R-I-T-A-B-E-N-N-E-T-T. Thank you for the opportunity to testify here today. I am testifying on behalf of Support Our Schools Nebraska, and my testimony also reflects my personal view that LB 1402 must be repealed. I enjoyed a 30-year career working with our public schools, and although I retired in 2021, I quickly learned I cannot retire from my lifelong passion to support all children and public education, especially when I see continued attempts to divert public tax revenues away from Nebraska's constitutional guarantee of a free quality public education. I've been quite busy since 2021, and with respect to why we're here today, I've spent countless hours volunteering in support of children and public education. I've emailed senators, called senators, testified at legislative hearings.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, thank you. I've emailed senators, testified at legislative hearings, and along with hundreds of others, I volunteered to blow up signatures on not one, but two petition drives related to these issues in order to protect public education from private school voucher schemes. Beginning in 2023, it was LB 753 that demanded my attention. After Senator Linehan's private school income tax credit bill passed by a very narrow margin, I and hundreds of others across Nebraska got to work. More than 117,000 Nebraskans enthusiastically signed a petition to repeal LB 753, and those 117,000 Nebraskans successfully used their constitutional right to petition, meeting all legal requirements, so that the issue could appear on the November 24 ballot, allowing voters of Nebraska a voice in protecting public dollars for public schools. In a rather bewildering move, rather than respecting that will of 117,000 voters, Senator Linehan sent a letter to the Secretary of State asking him to take the measure off the ballot. When that wasn't successful, Senator Linehan then introduced LB 1402. I happened to be here at the hearing, at that initial hearing when she introduced the bill, and she was very clear then that 1402 was intended to deny Nebraskans their right to vote on a repeal of 753 while imposing a new voucher scheme on taxpayers. Not only that, but she worked to hold the final vote on LB 1402 until the last day of the 2024 legislature, so that opponents would have as little time as possible to gather signatures on a new petition drive to put a repeal of 1402 on the ballot. In fewer than 67 days, public school supporters across Nebraska again flocked to sign the petition, recognizing how critical an issue this is and that LB 1402 should be repealed. A spoiler alert, history repeated itself, and again, Senator Linehan, Linehan and her out-of-state, deep-pocketed ally, Betsy DeVos, tried to deny voters their constitutional due process, filing a lawsuit to have the People's Referendum on 1402 taken off the ballot. Finally, the Nebraska Supreme Court slammed her attempt to circumvent our constitutional process, reminding all that the right of the people to petition their government is a precious right that must be honored and respected. Two years, two successful petition drives, and 200,000-plus signatures later, it has been made clear that Nebraskans will not be denied their voice, despite the fact that at every turn, a few politicians were intent on imposing this scheme on taxpayers, afraid that if we got the right to use our voice, the scheme would fail. Facts do matter. In every state that has enacted similar voucher schemes, the cost to taxpayers has skyrocketed. And despite the claims of Senator Linehan, those states have in fact suffered cuts to their public schools. It takes little time to do the research to find that Iowa's voucher scheme has doubled and is projected to increase the hit to taxpayers to the tune of $345 million in 2026. In Arizona, we find the headline that vouchers might bankrupt the state as the school voucher program, program causes a budget meltdown. And finally, Florida's private school voucher scheme is already more than $2 billion over budget in year one, ballooning to over 500% above productive costs. Senator Linehan's voucher scheme in LB 1402 would take $100 million in funds over the next 10 years that should be used for our public schools, and make no mistake, the kind of escalating cost to taxpayers that has been seen in those other states will happen here as well. $100 million represents general fund tax revenue that our public schools need, and the harm it will do to lose even more than that is frightening indeed. Nebraskans agree, public funds should be invested in public schools, which serve and will continue to serve 90% of all students in Nebraska. Facts matter. LB 1402 will lead to an increase in property taxes. As state funding is diverted from public schools, local communities will be forced to increase property taxes to make up for that lost funding. Draining funding from our public schools will also lead to cuts to needed programs that support all students. LB 1402 would provide tax dollars for private and religious schools that will not be held to the same transparency and accountability standards as our public schools are held. We won't know how much funds are being spent, how they're being spent, whether those programs are successful, we won't even know which students they select for attendance. Furthermore, proponents of 1402 even refused to add non-discrimination language to the bill, making clear that they intend to discriminate. I'm a product of public education. My children received a great public education, and I urge Nebraskans to vote to repeal LB 1402's private school voucher scheme by marking repeal on ballot measure 435. Our children can't afford to lose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now I would ask Jeremy Eckler to please come forward to show the opening remarks
My name is Jeremy Eckler, J-E-R-E-M-Y. Eckler spelled E-K-E-L-E-R. I'm the Executive Director of Opportunity Scholarships in Nebraska. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about a very important issue today and why voters should retain on 435. Nebraska has a long history of love for school choice. Nebraska can support subsidies for early childhood education and childcare. Nebraska can support scholarships like the Nebraska Opportunity Grant, Pell Grants, the GI Bill for higher education. As a matter of fact, in the same year that LB 753 Opportunity Scholarships passed, a similar law passed for early childhood. It was called LB 754, just one number away. It helps provide funding to private childcare centers, private early childhood centers, and provide scholarships to families who choose private settings. This bill was not challenged by public school teacher unions. They did not say this took money from them. They did not say this depleted the funds for public schools. And now LB 754 stands as another example of how Nebraskans love school choice. Yet, when it comes to K-12 education, something changes in Nebraska. The same folks who do not oppose laws for parents who choose private and faith-based childcare centers are outraged that the same plan might work for a kindergartner. The difference is clear, the influence of national and local teacher unions. As an aside, there's an irony in this opposition as Nebraska public school employees, sure, sure. As an aside, there's irony in this opposition as Nebraska public school employees are frequent applicants for opportunity scholarships. This is not surprising, as roughly 20% of public school teachers in the country choose private education. The number of public school educators who support choice is even higher in states with school choice. This follows the trend. Education choice grows because parents love it, regardless of their profession. So it is wrong to assume that teacher unions represent all their members on this issue. Later, you will hear from career public school educators and administrators on this very topic. But back to the point, in 2023 and again in 2024, as my counterpart pointed out, a supermajority of state senators pass education freedom bills. And what was once steeped in speculation and fear-mongering by opponents of education freedom can now be checked by reality. We have data, and facts do matter. I'd like to bring that reality to light by giving some data points. Number one, despite the ads by opponents of education freedom, all 215 schools eligible for this program are accredited or approved by the State of Nebraska, and you will hear from their leaders today. They must meet state standards to operate. All their state, all of our students take national, not local, norm-reference tests. They do have to do enrollment and attendance for who's in their building. Most importantly, they're accountable to families, because if they don't do the job well, the doors close. That's why 36,000 Nebraskans choose these accountable schools. Number two, you will hear inaccurate and misleading data about a lack of private schools in Nebraska. Remember this, 89 of 93 Nebraska counties have at least one family sending children to these accountable, non-public schools. Also note, there are three new non-public schools that launched this year in the rural parts of Nebraska. In other words, Nebraskans have access, will travel for access, and would like even more access to school options. Number three, we've already heard the word discrimination. You will hear that opponents say that non-public schools discriminate. First of all, there is a non-discrimination clause in the bill. We need to read the bill and be accurate with our facts. Yet, 40% of scholarship recipients now attending the school of their choice are students of color. It's also worth noting that the average ACT score for a student of color in Nebraska is four to five points higher than a non-public school. Speaking of discrimination, a dozen of our scholarship recipients receive scholarships because Nebraska public school districts denied them option enrollment. Without school choice in Nebraska, those kids who are denied option enrollment would be stuck in a school that does not fit their needs, and that's not okay, and that's why we passed legislation about this, and you will hear more on this. Number five, special education. Typically, 12 to 14% of students in Nebraska, non-public schools, are students with special needs. It is worth noting that a top qualifier for a scholarship from Opportunity Scholarships in Nebraska is special education. Roughly 11.5% of our scholarships are going to students with special needs. This means that not only are these accountable, non-public schools serving kids with special needs, they're serving even more now than ever. With more programs like LB 1402, this will only expand, giving parents more option for their amazing kids with unique needs. Number six, 70 of our scholarship winners qualified for a scholarship because they had a verified incident of harassment, bullying, or assault in a public school. Listen, all schools work very hard to provide warm and welcoming environments. Bullying happens everywhere. We all need to do a better job on this. The point is that a child has a chance at a fresh start when laws like LB 1402 are retained. Let's dig into the financials, as this program serves Nebraskans who can't afford to pay twice their property taxes and then their tuition. So here's a breakdown. The data on our scholarship winners to date, nearly half of our scholarship recipients are below the Children's Health Insurance Program threshold of 213% of poverty. 22% are below 300% of poverty, another 16% are below 400% of poverty, which is essentially a schoolteacher and police officer with a small family. Despite the claims by the opposition, the average scholarship amount is $1,700, which is far from the cost of tuition or somehow non-public schools banking money, but it does help close gaps for families. I'd like to round out my time with a few final observations. First, Nebraska was the last state to pass a form of school choice for its parents. However, the concept of K-12 education freedom has been in play for over 30 years in the United States. It has flourished, not diminished. As my counterpart pointed out, these programs keep growing and growing. Why is that? They're being used because parents love them. As a matter of fact, interest in LB 1402 is at double the rate that 753 was. Tonight, you will hear opponents of education freedom rattle off arguments and stats about the dangers of school choice, but two questions will remain. If school choice is a bad idea, why do we promote and encourage it at every other age besides 6 to 18? If school choice is such a bad idea, why does it always grow once parents discover it? There is data showing that where school choice is robust, public schools improve because they have to compete in a marketplace to meet, to meet the demands of the families they serve. And we know locally, since passing school choice in Nebraska, the state has made historic investments in public education that you will hear more about. When one considers that non-public school students in Nebraska save the state over half a billion in taxes, it is misleading for anyone to claim money is being taken from public schools. It is even more misleading for opponents of education freedom to claim school choice will increase, will increase property taxes when LB 1402 is funded by state dollars. Property taxes are levied locally and used by public schools. In other words, the opponents paying for the misleading ads are the beneficiary of your rising property taxes. The truth is that school choice does not take money from public schools. Rather, public school special interest groups are taking choice from Nebraska's parents. You'll hear from some of these families today. Please vote to retain on referendum 435. Protect education freedom, protect your fellow Nebraskans, and thank you for the time.
Now we're going to turn to members of the public who've signed in. I'm going to alternate until we run out of the, of one side or the other, between proponents and opponents. Each testifier, as I say, will have five minutes at this point, and I'll let you know when you have one minute remaining. As I prepare this, if everyone can make sure that they check your cell phones and make sure they don't go off, the circuit, I do want to apologize for mine going off. I had information that the streaming wasn't working, and your voice told me it was working. So that was your voice, glad you heard, so I do apologize for that. With that, I will start with the first proponent, Shirley Nemeier.
I'm a proponent of repeal.
How do you speak and spell your name, please?
Pardon? Shirley Nemeier, S-H-I-R-L-E-Y-N-I-E-M-E-Y-E-R.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to repeat that in 10 years, that is 100 million, and then it just continues. And a couple of points I wanted to make, I'm a very strong proponent of public schools. We try in our town, rural town, to really provide more money so that other things can be repaired, built, and so on, so there's a lot of private funding that goes into public schools also. Okay, it says in this law, qualified schools mean operated for not, not-for-profit, complies with anti-discrimination provision, complies with health and safety and so on, and fulfills the applicable accreditation or approval requirements of the State Board of Education. To me, applicable means who makes that choice that it is applicable? Can they make choices about accreditation or other items? The criteria for scholarships, as I looked at those, they're the first, and I understood that, but it seems that if money for low income and for need is needed, the second priority is household income as a criteria for scholarship. And it appears to me that that would be a first priority for the scholarship or criteria. Another section, which is number nine in the law, it says, shall not be construed as granting any expanded or additional authority to the state of Nebraska to control or influence the governance of policies of any qualified school due to the fact that qualified school admits and enrolls students who receive education scholarship. And to me, that not be construed as granting expanded additional authority to influence the government, I don't understand what that means either. You know, does that mean that if the state wanted to enhance a new standard, they had the option of not accepting it? And that I don't know. Some private, well, some homeschooled, and I don't know if homeschooled would be eligible for these scholarships either, but they use the public school systems for sports, special education, and other special courses.
Other classes?
Oh, and other courses, yeah. The Pew Research Organizations describes private schools as known for being selective, religiously affiliated, or sometimes both, and charge tuition rather than receiving public money. As a result, they have more autonomy when it comes to curriculum and other academic standards. And there's a reason that we have national and state standards for education. Public schools. Public schools are relatively evenly distributed across urban, suburban, and rural areas, while most charter and private school campuses or schools are located in either cities or suburbs. How do sparsely populated areas, Western Nebraska and Central Nebraska, feel about tax dollars going from property taxes for this issue when they pay for schools? And we know they complain about property taxes. This is a map of the private schools in Nebraska, and you can see that third, Eastern Nebraska, primarily has most of the schools. And even in the public schools, we have scholarships that are donated, and we have book bags and donated supplies in the public school for those students that can't afford it. And finally, I'd just like to say, how would or does the public school, the public respond, excuse me, how would or does the public respond to Nebraska's private schools created that are based on? What if they were based on Hindu or Buddhist-based, Muslim, private education schools in Islam, Jewish, Latter-day Saints, Seventh-day Advents, and many more? I don't have a problem with that as long as they're focused on education and not violence. But I just asked that question. And I just asked you not to take dollars away from the public schools, but to enhance the dollars for the public schools.
First opponent, Katie Zach.
Katie Zach, K-A-T-I-E-Z-A-C-H. As I said, my name is Katie Zach, and I am grateful to be here today to explain what the Opportunity Scholarship has meant to my family. My husband, John, and I have six kids, ages six months old to nine, with four attending Cathedral of the Risen Christ School here in Lincoln. John teaches and coaches at another private school, and I am a stay-at-home mom. As all parents do, we put careful consideration into the right school for our children and decided that private school was the best fit for our family, even though finances are really tight. When I first heard about the Opportunity Scholarship and that we had qualified, it felt like I could breathe a little more freely. Our grocery bill only gets larger due to inflation, our growing family, and it really means the world that there are people out there who care about our rights as parents. There are people who want to give my kids access to the education that is best for them, no matter what their parents' income might be. That's what school choice does. It allows a family to find the right fit, and that's what LB 1402 Education Scholarships hopes to provide. We must retain this law. My husband and I have lived in different parts of Nebraska our whole lives, and we've always been struck by the way the people in this state look out for each other, specifically in our commitment to education. Our family, like so many others, qualifies for the free and reduced lunch program our schools offer. As teachers, we've seen firsthand how private and public schools can join forces for everyone's mutual benefit in forming IEP teams to serve students with special needs, and on a broader scale by sharing materials through things like the textbook loan program. Nebraska even partners with parents from the moment we step out of the hospital with a newborn and a NEST 529 brochure, which offers financial aid to our investment in higher education for our little ones. The Education Scholarships Program is right in line with all those initiatives so close to Nebraskan's hearts. Since our house happens to be right across the street from Cathedral's playground, you can find our family on many summer evenings and fall weekends, trying out the monkey bars and shooting down the slides there with the other neighborhood kids, many of whom attend the local public elementary school. The children organize games of tag and make-believe among themselves and invite the others to impromptu games of soccer and four-square when they happen to bring a ball along with them. No one demands explanations of the others' enrollment in this or that school before entering the school grounds. All that matters is that a neighborhood friend would like to join in the important work of playing and growing together. That, to me, is what the Opportunity Scholarships is all about. Authentic communities lending a hand as we are able to a neighbor who could use one. Tonight, I humbly ask my Nebraska neighbors to retain education scholarships. They mean everything to families like mine, and I feel privileged to be able to come here and say thank you for the opportunity.
Next, for supporters, we have Rita Bennett. Oh, sorry.
I can say it all again.
I did that yesterday to someone because we didn't mark it down, but I just covered by saying she called me Mr. Secretary, and I wanted to hear from her again. All right, next. I'm realizing why committee chairs don't have people sign in so they don't have to butcher names, so please excuse me, but Terry from Lincoln, I have next on the supporter
Kind of scribbled my notes. I'll try to follow them. I'm not with a group. So there are many reasons, I feel, to repeal 1402. The one I'd like to address is that public tax dollars were designated to be spent to support only public K-12 schools, well documented. What I'd like to note, that Nebraska is different from a lot of states. In Nebraska, nearly 70% of the K-12 private schools, or K-6, are parochial. And, excuse me, more than that are parochial, but 70% of them, the private schools, teach and infiltrate throughout the student day one specific church denomination's beliefs. And in Nebraska, the very vast majority of private schools are composed of two church Taxpayer funds should not, in effect, fund two school systems, but rather the public system designated for public funding. Taxpayers should not have to participate in funding schools to teach mandated, specific church doctrine. Public schools serve all students. Unless they choose to go elsewhere. And the last little thing is, I think it's important to note, 1402 does not prevent any parents or churches from religious teaching, instructing, and practicing their own church denomination's beliefs. And many take that right and the responsibility to heart and do that within their own families and their own churches.
Next, from opponents, Stan Hendricks.
My name is Stan Hendricks, S-T-A-N-H-E-N-D-R-I-C-K-S. I'm speaking in support of LB 1402 and to retain initiative 435. My name is Stan Hendricks, and I'm a retired public school teacher, coach, principal, and superintendent of schools in Nebraska. I spent 15 years as a public school English teacher and coach, eight years as a public school K-12 and 712 principal, two years as a director of education at a junior college, and 12 years as a superintendent of schools in three Class C and D-sized public schools, all in Nebraska. I retired three years ago, and in retirement have been coaching for two years in a smaller private school in Nebraska. Basically, I bring perspective from all sides to this issue. I spent my entire career as a public school teacher, coach, principal, and superintendent at small rural Nebraska schools. One of the many positives these schools had was the variety of opportunities they offered students. Historically, those opportunities were enhanced when the Nebraska Legislature enacted option enrollment legislation in 1989. This allowed public school students in Nebraska to attend any public school within the state. Prior to that legislation, a student attending public schools was bound to attend the school in their district of residence. In order to attend another public school, the student needed to either physically move into the new district or pay tuition to the new district. Both of these options would be a hardship and were hardships on most families. When option enrollment was first enacted, there was some trepidation about what this freedom of movement would look like. What schools found out was that while students didn't always mesh with a given public school, they often thrived when they changed environments to other schools. It wasn't an indictment on their former school. It was simply the dynamic between individual students and the school environments. Over the years, I saw numerous times, whether it was students who opted out of my district or into my district, that the new school environment worked for these kids and their parents. Additionally, from a school finance standpoint, option enrollment was not a burden on the school district, as net option funding payments from the state followed students to their new school district. Those payments in this past 23-24 school year were in excess of $10,000 per student. As a school administrator, I wholeheartedly embraced this concept of option enrollment and used it to self-reflect on strengths and weaknesses of the schools I led. Interviews with students switching districts could give insight into ways to accentuate strengths and to try to minimize weaknesses in my own district. I found that the freedom of finding a school that is the right fit is an essential choice that students need to have in determining what works for them. From my perspective, LB 1402 is a logical extension and expansion of option enrollment. Nebraska private schools add to this list of options for kids. There is data accumulated over decades showing Nebraska option enrollment and school choice initiatives from other states provide beneficial choices for students. The key difference when private schools are brought into the mix is the financial barricade that some students would have attending a private school because of tuition costs. These families do pay twice. Their family's property taxes support the public schools, and they have to pay tuition to be able to attend the best school for them as they see it. LB 1402 is an attempt by our legislature to lessen that barricade for low-income and vulnerable students, to give them one more tool, one more option in finding a school that offers the right fit. A kid getting the right education should not be controversial. I think part of this issue before us is a public versus private school. Whose side are you on debate? But in my mind, this is not a public school versus private school issue. This is a question of giving all students in the state the opportunity to find a school setting which is right for them. As an educator, I want all students to be successful. Sometimes, the best chance for students to be successful is to search for a different school environment. LB 1402 fosters that belief for students, all students. The legislature has created a mechanism to help remove one of the obstacles in the way of students being able to consider private schools in their choice options. Through my experiences as an educator, I support anything that'll help kids get into a school environment that works best for them. That's why I support LB 1402 and will vote to retain initiative 435.
Good evening. My name is Guadalupe Esquivel. That's G-U-A-D-A-L-U-P-E, last name E-S-Q-U-I-V-E-L. And I'm here on behalf of the Nebraska Civic Engagement Table to support an effort to repeal Section 1 of LB 1402. The attempts by well-funded out-of-state special interests to sabotage the will of the people have been thinly veiled attempts at disenfranchisement. Twice now, the people of Nebraska have shown up in resounding numbers to show that this law has no place in our state. We saw for the first time in our state's history an outright refusal to honor the referendum process and suppress a vote. As Nebraska's second house, we, the people, have the rightful power to challenge the personal agendas that undermine Nebraska communities. Over 200,000 signatures were collected across both attempts, well over the minimum number required, and community members quickly mobilized once more, once their vote was silenced in the initial attempt. Why? It's simple. The will of the people cannot be suppressed when it comes to protecting the heart of our Nebraska communities. This conversation has truly turned the public's attention to the aspiration to send a child to private school instead of the glaring issues with the way LB 1402 proposes we get there. The issue is big-money special interests hiding behind this guise to fuel their own self-interests and a lack of public accountability to the tune of $10 million a year. Public dollars should come with public accountability. Just on the outside, the Capitol Building reads, "The salvation of the state is watchfulness of the citizen. It is up to the people of Nebraska to keep checks on the wealthy, well-connected groups that have derailed this citizen-led initiative and put a dangerous precedent on our referendum process." As an organization dedicated to empowering Nebraskans in our democratic processes, the Nebraska Civic Engagement Table urges a vote to repeal Section 1 of LB 1402 on Measure 435.
Next, in opposition, Senator John Arch.
My name is John Arch, J-O-H-N-A-R-C-H. I am the senator for District 14, which is Papillion-Lavista in Sarpy County, also the current speaker of the legislature. I am here tonight to testify, and I will be voting to retain Section 1 on the ballot this year. I voted to support this bill, LB 1402, throughout the process, and I want to tell you why. But first, I want to tell you what it is not. And it has been portrayed as, or at least perceived by some, as anti-teacher, anti-public school. I did not hear that on the floor. I did not hear that in conversations with senators. That was not the intention of this, and I don't think that's accurate. As a matter of fact, I was at a location where petitions were being gathered, and I engaged in conversation with someone who was gathering petition to repeal this. And we started the conversation, this happened to be a teacher from North Omaha who was gathering petitions, the signatures, and she was very offended, and she says, "You just don't understand how hard we work." And I get it. I mean, I know that's the case. I mean, I know that's the case. My wife is a substitute teacher in the public schools in Papillion, and she comes home, she tells me very clearly, "I understand how hard teachers work. It is not an anti-teacher bill." I sent both of my kids to public schools. They received a quality education. I know that it can be provided in public schools, and we received that excellent education in Papillion. And so it is not an anti-public school measure either. But not all kids experience that, and that's why this bill is in front of us. There are children where their school is just not a good fit, and they go, they do not have the resources to go to a private school, and they find themselves in that position. So the bill was designed to focus on low-income children who need an option, who do not have that option. There are many people who have the ability to pay all of the costs of private school, and that's their choice, but there are families, there are parents, there are children that do not have that ability. So in spite of the hard work of teachers and administrators, the child is not experiencing the quality education, for whatever reason, and there's many reasons for that. But then we turn and we tell them, "I'm sorry, you have no choice. You are stuck." And that's just not right. And so we did. We appropriated $10 million, not taken from school funding. As a matter of fact, we provided significant additional funding, particularly for special education for public schools. And now we want to say no to that small amount of $10 million to help low-income students and say to them, "I'm sorry, but you're stuck." And that's just not right. That's why I supported the bill, and that's why I will be voting to retain Section 1 in the ballot. Thank you.
Next for supporters, Al Coons. That's a pass? Okay.
Sorry, what was that?
Pass. Jason Whitmer.
Jason Whitmer, J-S-O-N-W-I-T-M-E-R, and I am here on behalf of ACLU of Nebraska in support of the repeal of Section 1 of L.B. 1402. Vouchers, like passed under Section 1 of L.B. 1402, do little to improve students' performance and are highly unpopular. They also threaten a separation of church and state. The voucher program diverts millions of taxpayer dollars from public schools, which serve everyone regardless of faith, to private schools, mostly which are religious. As a result, taxpayer money ends up funding religious education. Additionally, many schools aren't required to meet academic standards, many of these schools aren't required to meet academic standards, and can discriminate by excluding students based on religion, sexual orientation, or disabilities. Now, while parents have the right to send their children to private religious schools, religious education should not be paid for by tax dollars. For this reason, the ACLU of Nebraska supports to repeal Section 1 of 1402. Thank you.
Next for opponents, Bob Ziegler.
I'm Bob Ziegler, B-O-B-Z-I-E-G-L-E-R. I'm the superintendent of the Nebraska District Lutheran Church of Missouri Synod Lutheran Schools here in the state. Earlier today, I submitted my written comments and documents for a matter of public record. Also, this evening, as you heard from Jeremy Eckler, the data that he was sharing also included the Lutheran schools' data. We have 66 schools serving 6,318 students with 515 tax-paying teachers. In the Lutheran Church Missouri Synod, based out of St. Louis, Missouri, our national school system states that we believe God created the family unit and the parents as the primary educators of their children. The parents should be free to choose the school entity they feel best meets the needs of their unique family and children, all of which are tax-paying citizens. I'm amazed in all of the dialogue so far regarding this issue that the petition gatherers, and now the ads that are running on TV, haven't thanked the legislatures for increasing funding to public schools in the area of $1.6 billion. This information I pulled from Senator Merman's article, "Clearing Up the Misconceptions of L.B. 1402," on the Nebraska Legislative website. It's amazing that with an increase of $1.6 billion, and yes, you can multiply that by 10 years as well, that those people who received that haven't said, "Thank you," but are trying to not give parents of low socioeconomic means an opportunity for a choice at the level of $10 million. We also believe that parental choice in these matters will allow the parents to choose the best match for their unique child and learner. In my particular schools, about 15% of the students would qualify under these economic guidelines that are currently being proposed. We also accept students with special needs, and we work very closely with all educators across the state, because we believe and are happy to pay our taxes. And we also believe that as citizens who pay their taxes, for our democracy to function, we need a well-educated citizenry. And so we want all children to have a good, quality education. We want the parents driving that particular choice. In the documents that I was reviewing also, over the decades of school choice across America, I ran across the study called "Fiscal Effects of School Choice: The Costs and Savings of Private School Choice Programs in America Through Fiscal Year 2022," by Martin Lukin, the director of Fiscal Research and Education Research. In his concluding reports on page 44 of the 60-some-page research document, he makes some interesting statistical analysis, and he finds that for every dollar invested in school choice programs, taxpayers received fiscal benefits ranging from $1.70 to $2.64 for every dollar invested. In other words, students that are enrolling, either in homeschooling or a non-public school, are saving the taxpayers significant funds. The school choice website recently wrote this, "As research shows empowered parents who choose the educational environment they believe works best for their kids are more likely to see their children succeed and furthermore graduate from high school. Every child's unique, and students thrive when they're matched with the learning environments that meet their individual needs." I'm encouraging the citizenry to retain this opportunity and to look to give especially those families of low socioeconomic standing an opportunity to choose the education that best fits their child. Thank you.
Having exhausted the list of supporters, we will continue on with opponents. Next on the list, Senator Justin Wayne.
Are we ready? You start. Do I have to read my whole name and everything else, or how does this work?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My name is Justin Wayne, J-U-S-T-I-N-W-A-Y-N-E. Address?
No.
Okay. So the evolution of school choice has shown through my eight years of the legislature and even on my time as president of Omaha Public School Board. I casted the first votes against it. I was present not voting the first couple of years, and over the years, it has changed for me. The reason it's changed for me is I have a fundamental belief that I hope people in this audience will listen to, is that every child deserves a right to a high-quality education, not by chance, not by privilege, but by right. And if we believe high-quality education is a right, then institutions such as public education should not stand in the way from that parent or that child finding the best suitable environment for them. And what I mean by institutions is your income should not determine whether you have a high-quality education or your child. And I look no further than in North Omaha, where Nelson Mandela has a waiting list for years, where they are looking for alternatives. Jesuit Academy, right in the middle of North Omaha, is looking for alternatives. And being a president of a school board for over two years, I thought I could right that ship. I thought I could close the achievement gap. But it is too big to solve overnight. So the question I have for those who are against this is how long do people in North Omaha and South Omaha have to wait? How long does a family have to wait? I heard one state senator said it will take decades. I'm against term limits, but I could settle for 12 years. And here's why I came up with 12 years. When a kid enters kindergarten, by the time they graduate, we should make some changes. I can tell you for my district, that has not changed. It isn't that I am pro-school choice. I am pro, I have no other alternative. We have put money into education. We have put millions and hundreds of millions into education at the state level, while at the same time Omaha Public Schools is decreasing their property tax rate for political games while closing special ed opportunities in North Omaha and the district of my colleagues. So what are parents supposed to do? When they talk about this is about discrimination, I introduced a bill this year, L.B. 68 during 61 during special session, that said if a school discriminates, they should pay for that child to go to a different school district. You know who didn't show up? The union. So while they get up here and talk about discrimination, their actions don't speak for that on every bill that deals with option enrollment, which a kid from North Omaha is treated for $11,000 by the state who goes to West Side, but if he goes to Omaha North, he's only worth, or she's only worth, $6,000. What are we supposed to do and look at that parent and say, "You have no option because you can't afford anything else"? The ACLU says they want to protect religion from being taught by public dollars? Nowhere in this bill does it say that it has to be a religious organization, and in fact, ACLU can set up their own school and take kids. Nobody's been able to answer the question of what do I tell the parents in my district? You say throw more money at it? I did that. OPS got $30 million plus in special education funding while closing three North Omaha schools who couldn't afford teachers. Tell me what I'm supposed to do, other than give these parents an option, an option that clearly my district wants, clearly we are begging for. So don't stand here and say it's discrimination and it's outside influences, because there is a person right here from North Omaha, District 13, born and raised, who only left North Omaha for two years to go to college at KU and transferred back at Creighton, who says, "We're fed up and we're tired." There has to be an option for a parent who is looking for a high-quality education that you are saying is important for our Nebraska future. We recognize every school district isn't perfect. We recognize every school is not the best suit for that student. So break hold of this ancient belief that we're destroying public education and embrace the idea that we are giving parents and students a chance for a better future. And if we get it wrong, how worse are we right now than what's happening in my district, where people aren't graduating and we are filling up prisons with fourth-grade education requirements? Because that's what's in our prison system. How are we better? And if somebody can answer that, I'm all ears. But for eight years being down here, nobody has answered that, and that's why I'm voting to retain this bill. Thank you.
Next, Sierra Schaus.
Good evening. My name is Sierra Schaus, S-I-E-R-R-A, last name Schaus, S-H-O-U-S-E. I apologize if my voice gets a little shaky. I am not by any means a public speaker. However, this is something that I feel very passionate about. I wanted to share a little bit of my experience with the Opportunity Scholarship that my son received this year. My son is a kindergartner at Christ Lincoln, and to my son Sammy, it is the only school he has ever known. From daycare to preschool to Sunday school, he has grown up in the community, and it has played an important role in shaping and molding him into the person that he is today. Before he was even a year old, I knew that Christ Lincoln was the school I wanted him to attend because of the values that are exemplified throughout the school and church. One of my biggest reasons why I found home and security in my son and future children going to Christ was because of the values that are instilled there. We have attended Christ Lincoln for church for over 10 years, and the main reason that I wanted my son to attend there is because of their values that are instilled within the education. As a parent, it is difficult to assume risk that those that are going to be responsible for teaching my children are going to have the same moral views and family values that I have. My children are human sponges that absorb absolutely everything around them, and in our family, it is important that I know my children will be more than just scholars. In their education, I want them to learn morality and compassion and generosity, and I felt that the values that were exemplified at Christ Lincoln aligned more with my family's sense of those characteristics than I could guarantee in the public school system. At Christ Lincoln, my son Sammy, who has been identified as having special needs for both academics and developmental delays, received personalized guidance and support in his current classroom, allowing him to remain a normal part of his class and still getting the resources that he needs to succeed without being taken out of his classroom. I am a single mom of three amazing children. We are a single-income household. It is just us. And I don't say that to expect pity. I say that because I do not have the financial resources to be able to send my children to the school I think they deserve to be at. Financial restraint should not exclude my children from being able to access education that best aligns with our family's dynamics and circumstances. The biggest goal that I have for my children is for them to see the example I set with my work ethic, but not feel limited by our circumstances. They should never have to feel that they are less than or less than worthy than anyone else to desire to be at a school that they feel comfortable in and encouraged and uplifted. I've had to make countless hard decisions that have made me feel like I am failing as a mother just because of not always having the financial resources to give my kids the things or experiences that I think they deserve. I want more for my children than what I can currently give them, but their education and their future is not something that they should have to sacrifice. The Opportunity Scholarship that my son received this year has not only positively impacted my son's education and character and his confidence, but has been a weight off my shoulders. As a parent, I know what is best for my children, not anyone else. And the burden of potentially not being able to give them what I know they deserve is crippling, and that is a pain that no parent or child should ever have to feel the consequences of. The Opportunity Scholarship has taken that burden off of me, and it has given Sammy the opportunity to grow and learn where he belongs, and it's for that reason that I'm hoping that the decision is made to retain referendum 435.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list, we have Jeremiah.
Next on the list, we have Jeremiah.
Name Jeremiah Majorins, J E R E M I A H, M A J O R I N S. I have the privilege of serving as a principal of Christ Lincoln Schools here in Lincoln. This is my second year as principal. A little bit of my history, I've taught in both public and non-public schools throughout for over 12 years before becoming principal at Christ Lincoln. I also grew up going to private schools here in Lincoln. But I say that because in my own household, I, my own brother started going to private school, but made the choice to go to a public school. So, in our own house, my brother and myself attended what fit our needs the best. And I know that my parents would have been, as small business owners here in Lincoln, would have been very thankful for an opportunity at something like this as they made choices and sacrifices for our family and the different, two different locations of two different schools to best fit the needs of their children. Christ Lincoln Schools is a Lutheran elementary school located here in Lincoln that's approved by the state of Nebraska. I want to share a little bit more about my perspective on school choice, specifically why we must vote to retain referendum four thirty-five. L B fourteen oh two offers tremendous benefits for families throughout our state. The Opportunity Scholarships have already made a meaningful impact at Christ Lincoln, bringing in many new families who otherwise would not have had access or maybe even visited our school. One moment stands out to me in particular at the beginning of this school year. And after the first day, I did have a mom come up to me in tears overwhelmed with gratitude. She told me that this would never have been possible for my family before. This is our fit. Her story is just one example of how L B seven fifty-three and L B fourteen oh two are opening doors for families in need, providing them with educational options that fit their values and aspirations for their children. L B fourteen oh two offers several key benefits for Nebraska families in the state's education system. It provides families with greater choice, allowing them to select that best educational environment without financial constraints. This is important for low-income families, which the law prioritizes. The $10 million scholarship program offers critical financial support, ensuring that more students can access high-quality private education. Importantly, this program does not reduce that funding for public schools, which will continue to receive the full $5 billion in taxpayer funding. Public schools remain fully funded and both private and public schools are incentivized to provide high-quality education to retain students in our state. And I strongly believe it's so vital that we have both strong public and non-public schools. Without school choice, there are more than 10 families in our school this year that would likely not be in our school. These are conversations that I wouldn't look forward to. And as I get to work with new families each year, the financial need is great. And the opportunity to not be in our school, it doesn't, excuse me, the opportunity to not be in a school that doesn't fit their child from a social, emotional, and values basis is greater. In my short time as principal, I'm seeing more and more families desiring something different from what the public school offers. I've taught, like I said, in a public school. And I know and have seen families where that different school culture would have fit them better or fit their family situation better, but they can't afford it. Educators should agree, we want what's best for our kids. By supporting L B fourteen oh two, we're not just investing in scholarships. We're investing in the future of our students, our state, and empowering families with educational choice, as well as the resources they need to access quality education, create brighter opportunities for generations to come. Again, for all these reasons, I urge we retain four thirty-five. Thank you.
Next, we have David Kumm.
Good evening. My name is David Kumm, D A V I D K U M M. Thank you for the opportunity to speak regarding education scholarships and the need for school choice and educational freedom in Nebraska this evening. I am, I currently serve as principal at Trinity Lutheran School here in Lincoln. We are recognized as a Rule fourteen-approved school through the Nebraska Department of Education. We are also accredited through the National Lutheran Schools Accreditation Standards. The goal of school choice is to make all educational options, both public and non-public, accessible to families. Some families simply cannot afford a public school education. And education scholarships under L B fourteen oh two remove some of that financial burden from families who demonstrate need, giving parents a choice for the school they feel best meets their child's needs. Some students flourish better in different environments. Some families are seeking the faith-based values found in some of our non-public schools. For others, they may see more success in a smaller school environment. Again, it's about choice. It's about giving parents the opportunity to choose what would be the best fit for their child. Trinity Lutheran School is a very diverse student body in many ways. We strive to meet the needs of each individual student who attends TLS. Of our 90 students in grades K through five, 66% of our student body is white, 19% African-American, and the additional 14% comprised of Asian, Hispanic, Latino, or children of two or more races. 64% of our students attend Lutheran churches, while 17 attend other denominational Christian churches, and the remaining 19% are unchurched. We also serve a diverse group of learners. Thirty-three students in my building are either on IEPs or receive speech or title reading or math support services. Statistics also show that nearly 30% of the families here at Trinity qualify for free and reduced lunches. Thanks to the Opportunity Scholarship Act, we had 17 students who were awarded a scholarship, helping reduce that financial burden and make an education at Trinity possible for their children. Twenty-four students have already applied for an education scholarship under L B fourteen oh two. Many of these families would not be able to attend Trinity without a scholarship or financial assistance. So, I ask you to please support L B fourteen oh two and retain referendum four thirty-five. I'd like to share a story tonight about a family at our school. A new family this fall. This student struggled with behaviors at their previous public school. Guardians spoke very highly of the classroom teacher and the relationship that the teacher had with the child. There was just something missing, something wasn't working for that child. The family inquired about enrollment at Trinity, where we offered a much smaller class size and smaller student-to-teacher ratio. During the first quarter of this school year, we've observed tremendous growth in this student. There have been very few office referrals, behaviors have been manageable for the classroom teacher, and the student truly enjoys coming to school. She is making academic gains and she has a strong core group of friends. This student's guardians are on a fixed income. They didn't think that non-public school education was an option for their child. Thanks to an opportunity scholarship, this has become a reality for this family, and their child is striving. It would be a tragedy if they would no longer be able to attend or send their child to Trinity because they simply couldn't afford it. Nebraska families need educational freedom and school choice legislation, giving them a true choice on the best educational options for their children. This is a benefit to all, quality public and quality non-public schools. Approximately 36,000 children attend non-public schools in Nebraska. Would there be space in all of the local public schools to accommodate these students if needed? What about staffing? There may be some smaller public school districts that could absorb the local, the local non-public student population if needed. But in our larger public school districts, this presents a number of challenges, from space to staffing to funding, which would end up costing local school districts and ultimately taxpayers even more money. The total appropriation for education scholarships under L B fourteen oh two is $10 million. This equates to about 0.2% of the $5 billion in funding allocated annually to public schools. Education scholarships and school choice makes sense. Having both high-quality public and non-public schools that are accessible to all provides benefits to both systems. There is an accountability to providing quality education. As you know, your local, local public school system or another local non-public school may also be providing quality education. Parents have a choice, and they can walk out the door and move on to another school. For the most part, public and non-public schools have a strong history of working together for the benefit of all students. This was my experience after attending non-public school for elementary school, public school for high school. Having quality non-public and public schools can help keep class sizes and student-teacher ratios more manageable. Simply put, this is an issue about accessibility and choice for all Nebraska families. Please vote to retain L B fourteen oh two, retain on referendum four thirty-five, and protect fellow Nebraskans in their fight to find the school of their choice. Thank you.
Next, Senator Dave Merman.
Thank you. It's David Merman, D A V I D M U R M A N. And I'm here to testify to retain and support L B fourteen oh two. As the Chair of the Education Committee in the Nebraska Legislature, I've always been a supporter of public schools. I firmly believe that every K-12-aged child in our state deserves access to a well-funded, competitive, safe education. I also believe that every family has unique needs and values in which a one-size-fits-all approach may not always be best. Repealing fourteen oh two can deprive low-income students, students with disabilities, students who have been denied option enrollment, students who have faced bullying, harassment, and discrimination, and students who have a parent in the armed services of an educational system that best fits their needs. To add insult to injury, its opponents have been committed to pushing falsehoods and misconceptions to do so. Repeatedly, I have heard from opponents of fourteen oh two that this defunds public schools. But in 2022, 2023, K-12 schools received about $4.7 billion in taxpayer funds. Since my time as Chair of the Education Committee, we have additionally appropriated over $1.6 billion for our public schools. Compare this spending with the $10 million loss, or excuse me, cost of L B fourteen oh two, and you can see that it's only about 0.2% or 2/1,000 of our total education funding. Those who make this claim either haven't done the math or simply know that they are lying. And besides that, the $10 million does not come out of the school funding. It just comes out of the state budget. Others have argued that no public dollar should ever end up in a private religious school. But we have examples right now at the college level. We have the GI Bill, which allows our service members and veterans to go to private religious schools on a public scholarship. We have the Pell Grants, which allow low-income students to go to private religious schools on a public scholarship. Are opponents of fourteen oh two going to denounce veterans using the GI Bill at Creighton University? Or low-income students using Pell Grants at Hastings College? I doubt it, because these are good programs. They empower students to go where their needs are best met. L B fourteen oh two simply allows our K-12 students to have the same choice in going where their needs are best met. Finally, some will say that school choice has always existed, that those who wish to send their children to private schools can already do so. This comes from, this idea comes from a place of privilege. Private schooling can be incredibly costly. The reality is that currently, private schools are only a viable option for the people of Nebraska who can afford them. When it comes to getting a child a top-tier education that meets their individual needs, income shouldn't be the deciding factor. Too many opposing school choice was never about these arguments. Instead, the teachers' union and educational lobbyists have taken a my-way-or-the-highway approach. They tell struggling families that the one-size-fits-all solution is the only choice. We should understand that every family has different needs, different values, and different goals. Because of that, I support L B fourteen oh two and support an educational system that gives parents, not government, options to choose education that works best for them. Thank you.
The last person I have on my sign-in sheets is Carrie Stratman.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Stratman, C A R R I E S T R A T M A N. I live in Lincoln. My husband and I have four children. Our oldest is currently in Army Basic Training. We have a junior and a freshman at Pius and a sixth grader at St. Teresa's. My husband and I both attended public schools when we were young, and we know Nebraska has great schools. However, our faith is very important to us, and we wanted our kids to attend schools where they would learn about their faith as part of their education. We are very fortunate to have great Catholic schools here in Lincoln, and we knew it was worth the sacrifice to send them to Catholic school. With the cost of living continuing to rise, though, finances are very tight for us. Thanks to the Opportunity Scholarships, we are able to continue sending our kids to Catholic school and pay our bills. We are so appreciative of these scholarships. They are Godsend in these difficult times. Retaining four thirty-five gives us and other parents like us the chance to choose an education for our children that best meets our family's needs. School choice programs are vital for families and are proven to save taxpayer dollars. School choice doesn't take away from public schools. It gives all parents, regardless of financial status, a chance to choose the school that is best for their family. Most states have school choice programs to help kids and families. Please don't take this away from Nebraskans. Please vote to retain four thirty-five. Thank you.
This concludes everyone on my sign-in sheet. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? If you could just sign in at the front table out there, and they'll bring us the list. Okay. Could you? Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next, I have Sharon O'Neal.
My name is Sharon O'Neal, S H A R O N O N E A L. I've lived in Lincoln for 36 years. I'm a mom, grandma, and all the members of my family attended Nebraska public schools. All of them are thriving because of our excellent public school systems and the funding that goes along with it. In addition, I worked as a reading intervention paraeducator for Lincoln Public Schools for eight years and still run a free after-school reading support program at a low-income school. So, I've seen the good work our public schools and teachers do from the inside and from the outside as a parent, grandparent, and a Nebraska taxpayer. I'm asking all Nebraskans to vote against initiative four thirty-five that repeals L B. Hold on. I'm asking all Nebraskans to vote again, for initiative four thirty-five that repeals L B fourteen oh two, which takes $10 million of taxpayer funds to give to private and parochial schools in Nebraska. Funding religious education for schools that are already tax-exempt is simply not an appropriate use of public taxpayer funds. In Nebraska, 90% of all children attend public schools. Real estate taxes, as we know, pay for our public schools, and those taxes are already too high. The annual increases have been significant. For me, an 11% increase this year alone, with 66% For me, an 11% increase this year alone, with 66% going to support our Lincoln public schools. While it's a huge chunk of money for me to pay, so far, I've been glad to pay it for the quality education my family's received. In Lincoln, parents already have a choice of which public schools their children attend. So if parents want a different school for a better education or different surroundings for them, there's already a choice. If they want their children to attend a private school that charges tuition and enforces religious beliefs, they are fully aware of the cost. And besides, Nebraska already has a 529 savings plan that offers significant tax advantages to help parents save for it. Over half of Nebraska's 93 counties don't even have a private school. So to say that LB 1402 gives parents across the state a choice between public and private schools is a false narrative. This $10 million in public funds will disproportionately go to well-off families in more urban areas like Omaha, Lincoln, and Kearney, who already have the money to pay for tuition. Currently, the law allows private nonprofit organizations to create their own foundations and collect donations to create their own scholarship programs, again, with great tax advantages, both at the federal and state level, enabling them to use those funds to recruit and pay tuition for lower-income families or those who can't afford the high cost of private school tuition. Under LB 1402, private schools will be able to pick and choose. They'll choose their own students, choose how to use the funds, and choose what educational objectives to put in place, with no oversight or accountability by the state. Public schools can't do any of these things. They have mandates they must follow for educational objectives, rigorous academic progress standards, and they must take every child. While $10 million might seem modest to some, it will be going to only 235 private schools who serve only 42,000 students. That's compared to the 1,035 public schools throughout the state who serve 328,000 students. Not a very fair division, it seems to me. Our public schools are already under financial pressure. In Lincoln, state aid was cut by $31 million. Millard lost $10 million. Auburn and Schuyler were both cut by $1 million. In total, 110 school districts lost state funding this school year long. This means cuts to teachers, eliminations of programs for students, and larger class sizes. Most importantly, states that have tried this model for financing private schools have been dramatically surprised when the bills come due each year. In Iowa, the initial $128 million cost doubled and will cost taxpayers an estimated $345 million in 2026. They also found that private schools hiked up their tuition after they had access to these taxpayer funds. Please vote to repeal LB 1402. It's nothing more than a money grab by wealthy people who already have enough money and tax breaks to pay private school tuition for their children, and it will leave rural and lower-income families in the dust. Thank you.
Next for opponents, Roger.
Good evening, sir. Paul Simmons. Sorry, I was running a little late today. My son wanted to finish his homework on the way here. Good evening, everyone. My name is Roger Yant, Jr., Y-A-N-T, R-O-G-E-Y. And I'm here today with my son Cotter, two Ts, who aspires to a career in law and politics. He knows more of you than I do, and I have traveled around the sun for 49 years compared to his 18. I stand before you today as a citizen of the great state of Nebraska, a former public school teacher, a father, a husband, a student, who was educated in both public and private school systems, and someone who believes deeply in the value of choice, especially when it comes to our children's education. That is why I am voting to retain referendum 435. My wife Kelly and I made a decision to send our children Cotter and Bellamy to a private school for two important reasons: spiritual value and college preparation. We wanted to give our children an environment where their faith could grow alongside their academic potential. We believe deeply in providing them with a foundation, not only for success and life, but also for living with integrity, compassion, and service to others. Our family's journey over the last few years hasn't been easy. I was deployed outside of the continental United States and stationed in another state for two of the last three years, fulfilling my military education while getting my masters. During this time, Kelly had to raise our children mostly on her own, and let me tell you, she is the most amazing person I know. She worked a full-time job while balancing the challenges of raising our son and daughter, ensuring that they had everything they needed emotionally and spiritually while I was thousands of miles away. I watched from afar through the lens of a phone as my son Cotter grew into a boy, grew from a boy into a young man, stronger, more independent, and ready to take on the world. I watched my daughter Bellamy play soccer, basketball, and volleyball from a mobile device, wishing I could be there in person, but knowing that the school we had chosen was providing her with so much more than I could give from a distance. The school became a lifeline for our family. They gave my children and Kelly what I physically could not: spiritual guidance, emotional support, and an administration that went above and beyond to ensure that they were taken care of. They were raised not only in the Lord's image, but with a sense of purpose and hope for their future. Now, here's why I believe referendum 435 is so important. It's not about telling families what faith to follow, or even if they need to believe in any faith at all, it's about giving families a choice, a choice we didn't always have. And the gift of choice, as I see it, is one of the greatest privileges our forefathers fought and died for. Education is not one-size-fits-all, and giving families more options opens up the endless possibilities, especially for those who might otherwise be limited by their financial situation. Unfortunately, there are special interest groups and outside influences trying to repeal Nebraska's new school. Absolutely. Did you want me to start in this certain place?
Start from four hundred.
Got it. Unfortunately, there are special interest groups and outside influences trying to repeal Nebraska's new school choice program, the Education Scholarship Fund. But let me tell you, they have already received nearly 3,000 student applications for scholarships this year alone. These are families who need this program to give their children the best chance for success. And let's be clear, LB 1402 doesn't take money away from the public schools. It simply allows families to access the school of their choice. The $10 million scholarship program, while incredibly helpful to families like mine, pales in comparison to the $5 billion we invest in Nebraska's public school system. And did you know that private schools actually save Nebraska nearly $600 million a year? That's money that stays in our state's economy while giving families more freedom in choosing the right educational path for their kids. This isn't just about numbers, it's about people. It's about our children, and it's about the future. LB 1402 gives more families the opportunity to choose a school that best fits their child's needs, and I believe that's something worth protecting. So I urge all of you to join me in voting to retain referendum 435. Let's stand for educational freedom, for choice, and for the future of our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think it reaches the end of signed-in testimony. Is there anyone else that would like to testify before closing statements? With that, I would now ask Tim Royers to please come forward to share closing statements from the opponents.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Tim, T-I-M, Royers, R-O-Y-E-R-S. I am here as one of the sworn sponsors of the petition. I'm also here as the president of the Nebraska State Education Association, and most importantly, I'm here as a proud public school teacher, the spouse of a proud public school teacher, and the parent of two amazing kids who attend their public schools. I want to start by addressing some of the arguments that were made by the opponents who wish to retain Section 1 of LB 1402. First, the opponents tried to raise the questions about why we permit public resources to go to private institutions for childcare and higher education. I would remind our opponents that our state constitution is what identifies what we provide for the kids, for K-12 in our common schools. And if it is the argument of our opponents that we should look to things like Pell Grants and the GI Bill, as Senator Murman implies, then I would welcome them to apply the same kinds of nondiscrimination and compliance requirements that are placed on higher-ed institutions. He gave the example of Creighton University. Creighton has an Office of Title IX in civil rights compliance, which pales in comparison to what they're offering in this. Additionally, they talk about how all schools that this goes to are accredited or approved. I would ask you, after this is done, to talk to the opponents and ask them to tell you what the difference is between accreditation and approval, because it is stark. In addition, we heard a lot of people who said that they were proud recipients of opportunity scholarships, and I think it's important to clarify for the record, because how could they possibly receive scholarships for a program that has not launched yet? Section 1 of 1402 is not live. And that brings up another point. Why are we only repealing Section 1 of 1402? Well, it's because Sections 2 through 7 of 1402 eliminate the opportunity scholarships that those families benefited from that spoke tonight. Their opponents are not us. Their opponents are the state senators sitting over here, who voluntarily chose to end their own program purely because they don't want to let the people of Nebraska weigh in on this issue. And anyone is welcome to do charitable giving to maintain those programs as well. They imply that there is a nondiscrimination clause in this bill. There is a reference to 42 USC 1981, which is a very old, outdated law passed immediately after the Civil War, which only addresses a very narrow scope of discrimination. It does not say anything about gender, religion, or any other element of a student's identity that may get them denied admittance into a private school. And if we really want to settle the question of whether there's concerns about discrimination, I would point out that the very first person to sign the petition for LB 753 last year was Reverend Michael Williams, the president of the Omaha Chapter of the UNWACP. You heard a lot about examples about how this would allow people who have been denied... Sorry. Yeah, you're good. It's a me problem, not a you problem. You heard mention about how we are one of the last states to have a program like this, and I'm glad that that was pointed out. We should heed the warnings of those other states. There has been an exponential explosion in costs, as you heard by others. Iowa is one example, Arizona is another. You've heard a lot of remarks tonight about, "How could you be so concerned that this program only costs $10 million?" Arizona's program initially cost less than $10 million. It is now costing the state of Arizona nearly $1 billion today. It's also important to point out that there are worse academic results as a result of a voucher program. Indiana University reported in November of 2022 that, quote, "As voucher programs grow in size, the results turn negative, often to a remarkably large degree, virtually unrivaled in education research." And I think it's also important to point out that the vast majority of families in these other states that participate never attended a public school. Iowa's the most recent example. They're our neighbor right across the river, and it's important to point out that the average income of a family participating in Iowa's program was $128,507. And if you think that's coming from a partisan source, that number is lifted straight from Governor Reynolds' press release. There's also a lot of discussion about historic investment in K-12 education. First of all, that's a completely separate bill. Second of all, it was not a historic investment in K-12 education because, as the Nebraska Examiner reported on September 8th of 2023, quote, "Pillen jumped on a Zoom call September 1st with Nebraska school superintendents to urge them to utilize 97% of the recent increase in state aid to property tax relief." That money was not to increase funding for schools, that money was to provide property tax relief. Don't get that twisted. I think it's also important to point out, Senator Wayne mentioned Nelson Mandela as an example of a private school. Nelson Mandela has come out in opposition to 1402 and has asked people to stop using them as an example about why Section 1 should go through. If Senator Wayne was truly committed to choice, why did he introduce LB 1230, which restricted access to public option enrollment in the same city? The bottom line is, if we want to expand this to look at other education bills, as Speaker Arch referred to, a small amount of $10 million? You already heard from an earlier testifier four examples of schools, districts that lost money this year. Bellevue also lost $1.4 million in state funding. Bennington lost $5.4 million in state funding. Gretna lost $6.4 million, and Papillion, where Speaker Arch is from, lost $7.6 million in state funding. So this notion that public schools are just awash with state resources is quite simply not true. You also heard that this can't have any impact on property taxes because that's a local decision. But I live in Millard, who lost $10.1 million in school in state funding this year. They had to raise their levy, because otherwise it would have meant cuts to staff and programs. And I think that's important to point out. The bottom line is this: choice is great, as long as it's publicly accountable and the rules are in place so that no student is denied admittance to that school. And if you think that that is only a possibility, I will use the words of the person that gave the opening statement from the opponents. A few years back, LB 639 was introduced, which would have required that all schools, public and private, provide training on how to handle seizures in the classroom. Mr. Eckler emailed the sponsor of the bill and said that, quote, "They would be unable to take students with seizure conditions if the bill passes as written," end quote. However, later in the email, he revealed he was more than happy for public schools to take the cost on of training for seizures, when he said, quote, "There is a route we found, cut non-public schools out by stating this bill applies to school districts." So again, this is not hyperbole, this is not just us playing boogeyman. The person who made the opening statement was willing to tell a state senator they would deny a student admission because of a medical condition to avoid incurring cost. The bottom line is this: we already have publicly accountable choice. Tax dollars should not go to unaccountable schools that have license to discriminate. And where I would finish is this: this vote is about the future, not just next year, not even five years from now, but 10, 20, 30 years from now. Because when we talk to people in other states that are much farther down this road than us, they said, "You can't let them get a foot in the door." And it was Governor Pillen that said in his testimony on 753 that that is his goal. His goal is for us to pass Iowa and to put more public tax dollars into a program like this than the state of Iowa, which means he wants hundreds of millions of taxpayer dollars to go to unaccountable private schools that have license to deny student submission based on elements of their identity, or if there's just too much of a behavior problem. We cannot let this foot in the door happen here in Nebraska. Please vote repeal on Section 1 of 1402 on Measure 435 to make sure that we maintain the excellent school system that we have in our state. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Senator Louann Lenehan to provide testimony and closing statement for the opponents.
I brought lots of documents for you. Good evening. My name is Louann Lenehan, L-O-U-A-N-N-L-I-N-E-H-A-N. I am the chairman of the Revenue Committee for Nebraska Legislature, and I represent Legislative District 39 in Western Douglas County. I want to start by being very clear. The support our schools funded campaign by the NSCA, NEA, and other local education associations and liberal proponents has misled Nebraskans at every turn for the last two years. And misled is a kind description. The reality is, they lie with reckless abandon. I have several examples. Here is a text that was sent out during special session. It says, "Tell your senator to just say no to the latest scheme to raise your taxes to pay for private school vouchers. Working families will pay more taxes and lose control of your K-12 schools under this new special session plan." new special session plan. Contact your senator." This is their description of a bill introduced in the Revenue Committee, supported by Senators Pillen, that would have done these things. It would have increased state funding for public K-12 schools by $1 billion. That was the goal. Because we knew we were going to have trouble with school funding, because that's the way the formula works. So we tried to increase funding by $1 billion. It would lower property taxes by 50%, and to pay for it, we were agreed to remove sales tax exemptions from popping candy, swimming pool, and house cleaning. No legislation, none, was introduced during the special session regarding private schools. This is just, it's, there was no legislation. They have continuously claimed that the scholarships for Nebraska students will hurt your public schools and raise property taxes. They have nothing to support that as far as facts. Here are some facts, and I have sourced each which are readily available in the Unicameral Update published after each legislative session. In 2023, the legislature set aside $1 billion from the state's general fund to a newly-created education fund.
I'm sorry, newly-created education?
I'm sorry. It is created the Education Future Fund. The state will directly, will direct approximately $30 million per year in additional funding to K-12 public schools. The state will pay public school districts $1,500 in foundation aid per student, beginning in 2324. The legislature further required the Department of Education to reimburse each school district 80% of their total allowable excess expenses for special education programs. 80%, which was a 100% increase in state funding for special ed, which was $150 million. We created new pathways to cash funds for a pathway to college. We provided for teachers who signed a contract to complete their second, fourth, or sixth year of full-time employment as a teacher at a Nebraska school, a $2,500 bonus for each year. So two years, $2,500; four years, $2,500; six years, $2,500, from the state, not from the school's budget, from the state, in an effort to keep teachers in teaching. We also appropriated money that if a teacher, current teacher, went back to school and got a special education certificate, mathematics, science, technology, or dual credit, they would be, they would be able to have a $5,000 grant from the state. We were trying and have been trying in legislature to help keep teachers in teaching and help fill subject matters that we don't have, especially special ed. In the end, we ended up appropriating an additional $327 million for public education and setting aside $1 billion for future public education spending. This is in addition to the $1.1 billion in state funding through the current T.O.S.A. formula, which I agree is broken, but nobody from public schools wanted to fix it this summer, and $1.3 billion in new property tax relief for school property taxes paid. As a state that was just a few years ago ranked at or near the bottom of state funding for public education, we are now in the top half, if not in the top third. Are we really to believe that $10 million in state general fund spending, which amounts to $300 per child in private schools, is going to hurt public schools? Again, $10 million means that would provide $300 per child for every child in private school. Over 50,000 students in Nebraska attend either a private school or home school. Their parents pay over $45 million in property taxes, as well as state income and sales taxes. These parents save Nebraska taxpayers $600 million a year by funding their child's education. Are we really going to begrudge them $300 per student? The supporters of repealing this claim in their most recent ad that Nebraska has some of the best public schools in the nation. I have lived in three different states and traveled in most over the last 40 years. Every teachers' union in every state claims that they have some of the best public schools in the nation. I've heard the ad from Virginia to California. In a recent report, what the referendum supporters do not mention is Nebraska, and Senator Wayne spoke to this, Nebraska has the highest achievement gap between white students and students of color in the nation. As a recent report, this report, from the Nebraska State Workforce and Education Reporting System points out, in 2022, 66% of Nebraska's 4th grade readers did not meet reading proficiency standards on the national assessment of educational process, progress, or need. And we all know, or should know, a student who struggles with reading early are less likely to graduate from high school, which of course will lead to lower lifetime earnings and other negative effects. Nebraska's own assessment revealed too many 3rd graders are not proficient in reading or math. There are schools in Nebraska, and some of these, as Senator Wayne would mention, are certainly in North Omaha, where over 70% of the students are not at reading grade level. But we have those schools all over Nebraska. They're not just, we have schools who have 3rd graders who are falling way behind from the east to the west. Let's talk about school choice in Nebraska. Nebraska has 244 different school districts. Nebraska has 214 private schools. And regardless of what supporters said, and they claimed to begin tonight, we have private schools all over the state. There are only three counties in Nebraska in which there are no students who attend a private school. We like choice so much in Nebraska that we fund seven different school districts in Douglas County and seven different school districts in Buffalo County. The legislature appropriates over $123 million to support pre-K public school students to attend a different public school than which they are assigned by geography. So I'm going to run short in time, but I'm going to, we've had several people say tonight, said for the last two years, that public schools accept every student. They do if they are forced to by law, because by law, if a student lives in your district, you have to accept them. However, two years ago, the legislature passed a law that said all public schools have to report to the Department of Ed now, and they have to report to the legislature how many students applied for option funding, meaning they get to opt into that public school. How many are getting turned down? Westside, 707 requests to opt-in, 350 rejected. Eighty-nine of the 300 rejected had IEPs. Hastings, 34 requests, three rejected. Out of the three that were rejected, two had IEPs. Logan View Public School, 22 requests, 16 were rejected, three because they had IEPs. All told, on this report, over 300 students were turned down from option enrollment because they had IEPs. I will give the proponents credit. They are well-funded. According to the Nebraska Accountability Disclosure and Current Spending, they are going to spend $4 to $5 million to repeal a $10 million program. They are taking $5 million from teachers they claim to represent to kill any chance for a better option for children whose parents can't afford to move to a better school district or pay tuition. I'm going to use 15 seconds here to point out the ballot language. There's something very wrong with the ballot language. Either it's an appropriation and the Supreme Court made it bad decision, or it's not an appropriation and the ballot language is wrong. Because it says, "A vote to repeal will eliminate the funding." How can it eliminate the funding if it's not an appropriation? Thank you very much for being kind to me.
That concludes the testimony here today. I just have a few closing comments. I'd like to thank Jennifer Beckman from my office for helping us through this hearing, especially on Monday, on a state holiday, to help us get through. There are six initiatives and only so many days before the election, and so we've had to pack these up, these hearings in very tightly. I'd also like to thank Capitol Security for keeping the building open late at night and keeping us safe. On that note, the building is going to be locked up in 15 minutes, so if you could please go to the room so we can send our folks home and clear out for the night. And finally, the reason why we are here is because these six initiatives are on the ballot on November 5th, and so we encourage you to please cast your ballot on that date or earlier if you so choose. Your ballot is waiting for you. Go cast it.